Welcome everyone, welcome to the school board meeting. Thank you for that. So as far as our role community is really just having a lot on too. Mrs. Brim is alderman. Everyone else is, so sorry, Mr. Beckwell is young secretary. He is alderman. Everyone else is here. So we begin with the management. Thank you. We have our first session of public comment. This will be with regards to agenda items. Are there any public comments for agenda items? Any online? Mr. Labia, are you able to hear us?
I don't hear anything really.
We can hear you.
Okay, I, it's, now I hear something. Before it was just cutting in and out. Sorry.
So the floor is yours. Please state your name and your township or residence. And then you have two minutes.
Okay. My name is Amy Deladio. I live in Pots Grove. Um, Pots Grove, Texas. I wanted to thank the school board for their service to our community and Dr. Finerty for his work in our district. And I'm hopeful that your leadership will continue to propel our students onto excellence. I'm proud to be a part of this Pots Grove community and I have nothing but praise and admiration for the teachers, support staff, and specialists who interacted and continue to interact with our children. And because of this, I decided to become a substitute teacher with our district. But what brings me here this evening is to bring to the board's attention a very disturbing observation. It's been my observation that many children are exhibiting behaviors that interfere with the learning of others as well as themselves. And much of my day is spent redirecting students' behavior. Variable learning time is being missed. Elementary students have yelled at me, um, flat out told me they don't care, they are misbehaving. And the level of disrespect demonstrated to me is quite appalling. So many children I come into contact with have great difficulty self-regulating. And I'm here to stay. It is not okay for children to interrupt the teacher while they are teaching. It is not okay to talk incessantly. It is not okay for students to threaten, throw items, even chairs, or to swear at teachers. These behaviors cause me to wonder if this is something that I can continue to do long-term. If you are wondering why there is difficulty retaining teachers, aides, or substitutes, this behavior just might be why. As a district, we've done an excellent job of feeding our children and providing tutoring. I've noticed outside agencies coming into schools to work with students. This is an amazing step in the right direction. However, our teachers need more support. We need more liaisons between the community and school. It's time for some parents to start taking responsibility to teach their children manners and respect for authority. This responsibility cannot be shouldered by the board or administrative alone. But I must say, rather the community coming together to support one another. We need to expect better from each other.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Labia.
Thank you.
Are there others? Okay. We have an executive session to announce that we have, after our last meeting, that took place on March 14th, in which we discussed personnel items. Next, we have a presentation from the Schrader group.
Okay, well, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Finerty. Thank you, members of the board. We plan on going through all eighty-four slides, so I hope you're prepared. I'm just kidding. I'm sorry. What we thought we would do is condense what we've put together and just try to talk to you about each building system across the facility. But maybe we'll go through a couple of quick slides at the beginning just to give you a sense. We will not hit all of those topics. But we'll talk a little bit about what we did and how we got you to where we get and then where you might go from here. So we just, oh, let's see, a little bit more. So the folks you have in front of you tonight consist of a couple of the people who did the study, and there were actually another four people on top of that. But my name is David Schrader. I'm, I'm one of the architects who was involved with this. Next to me is Jeff Majic from Snyder Hoffman Associates, and he's representing mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection. Tom Forsberg is a structural engineer with Power Office, and he represents not only structural engineering, but the building envelope. Part of the reason I'm excited about not presenting the whole presentation is because envelope is spelled wrong. So we're going to go ahead and get you a corrected envelope here in the various slides so that you can present those. And finally, Devin Bradbury and I had a series of architects with us, and we were able to walk through and do each of, we each had a separate set of buildings that we were responsible for. So what did we do? If you go a couple more slides here, we don't need to talk about ourselves there. Okay. So the goal here was to look at the buildings in their current form. And almost as if we're taking your car and doing a tune-up and saying, here are the pieces that you need to tune the car up and keep it running in good condition, as if it were new materials. But we're not changing that nineteen eighty-five vehicle to a two thousand twenty-five vehicle. We're making all the systems new, but keeping all the spaces as they are. And that's typically what these assessments are all about. So they're about bringing everything up to speed exactly as it is. Replacing all of the finishes, modifying all the envelope materials so that they all are back in good shape, the roof, the windows, the walls. And finally, replacing systems that need to be replaced in a certain amount of time. They don't change anything in the building from an educational standpoint, and you've done that recently in the high school in Ringing Rocks. So you already have that experience of modifying how the building's used. That's not what this is about. This is about system upgrades. Go to the next one. And so what happened was, over a series of days in December, your facilities team was good enough to spend time with us walking through each of these, the buildings. They identified the high, um, high-impact issues that they saw, but they also left it to us to identify what we see in typical school buildings from an architecture and engineering perspective. And so they were good enough to let us make our own assumptions as well about what we saw. We finalized a draft study and presented it to administration in February, and here we are tonight talking to you about the high level. And I think the way we'd like to do this is to talk about each system type across all buildings, maybe spend three or four minutes at most on that, and then tell you that there are a series of high-impact projects that you should be looking at in the short term, but there's a lot that can be deferred over time. So if we go to the next, just real quickly, you know where your buildings are. We don't need to tell you that again. From the assessment standpoint, though, and we'll go through a couple of these, this is the way it's addressed. So the document has not only a description of each item in each space in the building, but it also has a recommendation where there's a recommendation required for what to do. We then give it a priority, and the priority is either a one, a two, or a three. The, the system is set up so that it can be used as a spreadsheet, and you can categorize all of these and pick all the priority ones and start to implement those as a capital program if you wish. You can do the same with the priority twos and threes. Priority one are typically code life safety and systems-related issues that have reached the end of their useful life, and you need to be looking at in the very short term. The six-to-ten-year items are systems or finishes that are starting to reach the end of their useful life, and you need to start thinking about it in the next five or six years and implementing it over the next six to ten. And finally, the eleven-plus are those items that the building is twenty years old since its last renovation, or it's a twenty-year-old building, and you need to start thinking about that thirty-year life cycle that buildings typically go through in public education. So I think there's one last slide I'd like to hit before, these are just the assessment worksheets. It's a way of showing you how those assessments are broken out. And there's a whole book together that was distributed to administration only in February. But this is the high-level issue, and maybe we'll use this page to do all of the rest of the descriptions. So across the district, there are probably around thirteen million dollars worth of priority one projects. And I should say that it's probably only two-thirds of that cost actually is construction cost. So it's probably in the nine-million-dollar range that is construction. We also add soft costs to projects, and the soft costs are all of the fees, the permitting, the technology that goes into those spaces, and any furniture that you might buy if you do renovations to a space. So that thirteen million dollars is, is less construction cost. That's a total project cost for you. The priority-two project costs are a pretty big number. That's the fifty-one million dollars. And you may ask where all of that comes from, and you can see that it, it's from the middle school. And then you see the priority-three costs, and those are about the same as the priority-one. You would spread those out over a number of years, and those appear to be in the fifteen million dollar total range. So we'll go back to the middle school in a moment, or we'll go back to all of them in a moment. But the real thought process behind the middle school is not because there, there's a major issue with the building. The reality of the building at this point is you built it in the twenty-five ago year range, and it's reaching that twenty-to-thirty-year range where you start to think about replacing and upgrading the systems. That's just the way it is when you're investing in assets like this. That's why that number's in that range. And so in the six-to-ten-year timeframe, you will have to start to think about a number of the systems in the building. That's the biggie on, on your list. And I guess the last major comment relative to this is the buildings are beautifully kept. You've done a great job renovating them over the years. Kudos to everybody who works on these, on the staff, and to what money you've put in as a school board. So that's, that's all good news. I think the way we'd like to talk about this is we'll start with the building envelopes, and then we'll do a little bit of interior discussion, then we'll hit MEPs, and then we'll be done. So you can probably stick with this slide, and we won't go through the other eighty.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm going to start with the components of the building envelope, which generally consists of brick on the exterior, windows, doors, roof systems, that sort of thing, all these stuff you see on the outside. At Lower Pots Grove, the, the building is generally in very good condition. You have some masonry issues to address on the outside. You have some deterioration of the concrete loading dock. I believe it's at the east end of the building. The biggest issue at that building that goes into this priority-one number, um, the, the colonnade along the south side of the building, there's cracking occurring in all the brick elements that the, surround the columns. So that's, that's an item that needs to be investigated further to determine cause, and then we can figure out how to fix it. Moving to Ringing Rocks, again, this building is in very good condition. There are no real significant, uh, envelope issues, I would say. There are a couple of things here and there, but they're pretty minor. The, the, the biggest issue we saw there outside, it's not necessarily attached to the building, but you have some settlement issues going on at your loading dock in the back. Again, an issue that requires some investigation before we can figure out what, what's causing that problem and then determine how to fix it. Excuse me. West, as you know, is your, is your oldest building that is in, I, I would say the, the toughest condition right now. We have a lot of issues with the masonry veneer around the building. Some of the site walls have deteriorated so far and, and partially collapsed. That building needs a roof. All your, all four other buildings have new roofs on them, and I, I believe that one is already on schedule for a new roof. Windows and doors, same thing. A lot of deterioration of those systems around the building, a lot of reported functionality issues. And that's really what's a big component of the priority-one west number up there is replacement of all those systems. Same thing with the middle school. Big part of the number there is your window and door systems. And there are a lot of windows and doors on that building. Again, reported a lot of functionality issues, leaks, numerous problems with the windows. You have some issues with the railing along the big concrete retaining wall on the west side of the building, along with some issues related to the, uh, to the pedestrian bridge that comes off the west side entry back to the parking lot. Finally, at the high school, very similar to some of the other buildings, you have some masonry facade issues, some cracked mortar, a little deterioration. You have a non-functional loading dock out there. It's not just the dock itself, but the concrete surrounding it apparently is causing a lot of problems with moving, um, uh, pallet lifts around, pallet jacks around. It's hard to work around, um, doors and windows again. They are, I, I believe a lot of them have been replaced in, in part. They apparently reused a lot of the old frames for doors and installed new doors. Still functionally in generally good condition, but something that's starting to show its, uh, show its age and, and date.
So some masonry issues to work on, which is pretty typical of buildings of a certain age, water that's infiltrated over time. It's a natural occurrence as time goes on. From the interior perspective, maybe you want to start, Devin?
Sure, thank you. So for lower, um, you can see there's really not a lot of, uh, costs in the priority-one category. This is a building that was renovated twenty, twenty years ago now. Finishes are generally in good condition. You're not going to see a lot of cost with finishes until you get to that prior-three category. What we saw there was the lower floor probably needs the most work. There's the stage, uh, rigging system, gym equipment, kitchen, uh, finishes are all, uh, relatively outdated and could use some, some refreshing. The locker rooms, uh, in that building are probably the biggest, um, concern. There's ADA issues, um, and generally the locker rooms are not even used as locker rooms now. So, um, that's probably an area of the target that's in the category-two. Do you want to just go to west?
The Ringing Rocks building, as Tom said, excellent condition. Kudos to the renovation there. The systems are all in good shape from a flooring, wall, and ceiling, uh, situation. The money that you see in the project, and it's not a significant number, is mostly related to the fact that a number of the bathrooms that were renovated, they were done right at the cusp of the ADA requirements. And so there are a couple of entry points that don't allow today's handicap circuit and circles to go into the spaces. It's a strange thing, and typically you don't actually have to address it until the next time you renovate it. There's a number there for that, and there's a minor number for some of the gymnasium flooring, uh, and a couple of other small items like that. So in general, the building's in excellent condition.
So for west, uh, you see a relatively moderate number in there, but just keep in mind, it is the smallest building that you have, uh, compared to the rest of those. So square footage-wise, there's the biggest cost, um, added to, to this building. All of the finishes, except for the terrazzo floors, are, uh, in poor condition, will likely need to be maintained or replaced, um, in the next five to ten years. A lot of the metal shelving in the classrooms in particular, as well as cabinetry, is very dated and worn. You have ADA issues with the sinks that are in the classrooms. Uh, there's also ADA issues with, uh, entries to the classrooms and toilet rooms in general in that building. Not to say, as David just mentioned, you don't have to do this immediately. You're still within the existing building code. But when you do a renovation, you're going to have to address ADA, uh, needs. There's one more. Uh, the stage, I believe, is, uh, also not accessible, and, uh, some of the rigging and, uh, flooring up there may take off again.
So for the middle school, it's, as I mentioned, the, the building is starting to get to the point where, um, you start to think about replacement of some systems. The flooring systems in general are, are aging, and so they fall into that second category of the six-to-ten, uh, that's floor and ceiling. The ceiling, if you walk down the corridors, you notice a lot of the ceiling tiles are curling. That comes about due to humidity during the summertime, um, and so, so that will probably want to be replaced at some point. You also have, uh, a metal unit ventilator shelving on the exterior wall. At some point, when you replace the unit ventilators, you'll probably replace the cabinetry. It's, it's almost a natural today. You used to replace the unit ventilator, and that cabinetry is part of the system that is not as much of a, a standard anymore. So a lot of times you end up replacing the actual cabinetry. And you've been through the building. Uh, it's interesting. It was also built at that ADA transition time, so there are some ADA issues that at some point will want to be picked up, especially if you do a renovation. Finally, there are some equipment issues throughout the building that we'll want to be taking a look at at some point in time as well. In general, that building is probably due for renovation in that, uh, larger period of time, the six-to-ten, and maybe after if you've decided you wanted to stretch that building out. But you'll have to talk about the systems when Jeff talks about that. And finally, the high school is, uh, pretty self-explanatory in that the building itself, uh, the renovations are exceptional. Uh, it's a, it's a beautiful building and has some great attributes for the students. The finishes and systems throughout are in great shape. There was a, a corridor on the ground floor over by the family consumer science areas and so on, where perhaps some of the casework was not replaced during those timeframes. That's the only reason you see any real numbers for the high school is because it spreads a couple of those items out over the years. Other than that, um, great building. The one thing we did not build in here were track renovations. And so there's another number that should be added to the projects if you intend to do something with the track as well. And let's hit the systems, and then we'll be open to questions.
So starting with Lower Pots Grove, um, as Devin mentioned, that building was renovated in two thousand and three, and, uh, the systems there in pretty good condition. We do have a lot of cost under priority-two there. That's because those systems being twenty years old, once they hit twenty-five, thirty years old, you're going to be thinking about replacing those. Ringing Rocks, we didn't have a whole lot to say about. It's from two thousand and eleven. That's your geothermal fit system. There's some lighting upgrades going on there, and a lighting control upgrade is something that's recommended because they're having some issues with the system that's there. West Pots Grove School that has a little bit of history, so most of the systems are from nineteen ninety-five. That school was renovated in two thousand and five. That was mostly an HVAC renovation to correct some existing conditions. Some of the components, like the chiller, are brand-new, so those costs are kind of spread out across priority-one and priority-two. And again, as Devin said, that's a smaller school, so those costs look, uh, slightly insignificant compared to some of the bigger schools, but there are issues there to address. The middle school has a traditional system. It was, most of the components are from around two thousand, so you're looking about twenty-three years old. And that's where a lot of the priority-two costs come in, because those systems, they are traditional. They're going to last a little bit longer than some of the other buildings, um, but you are going to hit that point in five to ten years where those start to look, um, like they need to be replaced. And then the last one, the high school, obviously not a whole lot to say. A majority of the systems are new. There are some older electrical panels in the building that weren't replaced in two thousand and fifteen, but, um, nothing significant to report there.
So I think that's the quick summary of the eighty-three slides. So hopefully that gives you a high-level sense of, of what we discussed and saw as we went.
I have a question. So I was looking through the presentation, and what I'm not finding is kind of a breakdown as far as per building. So we have the numbers as far as the priorities, but I'm not finding, uh, kind of an itemization of the building and then, say, for example, Lower Pots Grove, what, the tally, what house down the six, and what house down the third, if you want. And I don't see, I couldn't, you know.
Yep. So administration has an actual document that has every space, every priority, and all of those. And this can be categorized to easily show you all the category-one items, all the category-two and three, and it'll show all the numbers as well. So, um, as soon as, as soon as admin has finally reviewed the document in its totality, we're happy to have it go through administration's.
Thank you.
I want to talk about west. I want to drill down and talk about west a little bit. Two points. The brick veneer near the, uh, garage door, uh, is broken, and the bricks are actually broken. It's not a repointing situation where the masonry's cracked. It's actually the physical bricks are broken. Did you have a chance to comment, to examine that portion of the wall and that as a follow-up? Near that garage door, about twenty feet away, is a passageway door. And I have photos of it. The passageway door is clearly out of square. Did you detect any other signs of settlement? And did you do any examination to see what might be entailed, uh, with that corner of west? And it's in that garage area where I saw problems.
Sure. I mean, at this stage, again, we're at a very kind of high-level assessment, pointing out the things that we see that need attention. The next step would be to do a more thorough investigation, uh, looking much closer at exactly why those things are happening, what's specifically gone wrong, figuring out what those causes are, and then determining how to fix them.
Okay, but would that impact your cost estimates? And do you want to hazard a guess, or is, is that outside the range of your capabilities at this point?
I, I think in my assessment, from what I've seen so far, it, it's, it's not a major structural issue that has anything to do with safety or stability of the building. It's something that needs to be addressed, that can be repaired, and I, I would say, within the numbers that you see up there, whatever it costs, it's really not going to make any kind of major fluctuation with that number.
About what size would the error bars be on the soft costs? I understand these are estimates, but soft costs, I'm not familiar with estimates. What accuracy would I expect on those numbers?
So the soft costs, particularly in this situation, let me just verify before I get there. We typically We typically say they're 20, 20 to 30% of a project value. And in the case of this document, the numbers that were used were 20. And the reason that we use 20 is because you're not, none of these talk about full renovation, like taking a building and gutting it, starting over again. When you do a full gut, you end up having to also, because you're bringing the building completely up to the way this looks, for example. You typically buy new furniture because now you have new finishes on the floor, new ceilings, everything looks beautiful. You don't want to put the old furniture back in. So the furniture is a pretty large number in that. So that's why that number is not in there. It's only a 20% value. So the 20% accounts for a project contingency. And usually, that's 5 to 10%, 10% in a renovation. And then it accounts for the fees that go along with the work on that project, and finally, the permitting costs that go with that. And then there's probably a technology cost built into it. So if there were a range in soft costs, probably around 5% from that number deviation. And I would think that you could use 5 to 10% as a variation on the numbers that you see in here for renovations. The issue that everybody should look at, though, is these numbers are in today's dollars. That's the best that we can do at this point. And then we tell you to build in typically a 4% escalation over time. That's not what we saw over the last three years, obviously. There was a 13% and an 8% escalation over the last two. So we're all still reeling from those changes in numbers.
Okay. So you're using a relatively high escalator right now?
We use the escalator to this point to get the numbers. There's also a 4% escalation in here to the middle of next year because the assumption at any time that you do an estimate is that the number needs to include to the midpoint of construction. So the assumption would be that if you were doing a project and you designed it today and bid it, it would be halfway done a year from now. And so that's where the escalation comes from.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Tina, can you hear me? Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Obviously, I'm looking over at the first to the 10-year window here. We're looking at priority one, priority two. And we're roughly around $64.5 billion. Now, as much as we would like to put every dime we have in the capital, we're never going to be able to come up with $64 million. So it's going to need to be bonds and such like that, and borrowing. My question is, and you had a perfect segue because I was going to ask you about the inflation part, is would it be cost beneficial to do like a major renovation, like we did with the high school, with the middle school? Would that save us funds from this $42 million and possibly throw in something for West so that we're not, you know, as you said, we're not so, the efficiency is horrible there because it's so small with such a large number? Is that something that should be considered?
I have to give two different answers to it, and you folks have to consider this for yourselves. Up until 2016, we all would have been receiving reimbursement from the state. And the state required that if you did a project, you needed to do everything that had to be done in that building for the next 20 years. That's the way that they looked at it because you were not going to get any new reimbursement for the next 20 years on a project. So in those days, we would have said, you kind of have to do the whole project or else you're going to be doing piecemeals all along and getting no reimbursement. So that would have been the answer up to 2016 before the moratorium. The answer today is, do you want to pay for remobilization of contractors each time that you start a new project at the building as systems start to go downhill? So you kind of have to think about it from that perspective. If you do an HVAC project, one set of years, then you do an electrical, then you do flooring, then you do ceilings. Each time you do that, you are incurring escalation plus mobilization. So it could be that it costs you more over time. But we certainly understand the impact of borrowing that large number at one time and doing a whole project renovation. It's significant. So we get that.
Thank you.
So, Tom, I have a question. So I think it's a clarifying question on a statement you made earlier. And I think we've talked about it throughout the process. So if we're looking at doing a sealing-up renovation at West, we, there's no reason, from what I'm hearing from you all, to worry that the bones of that structure are not worth investing in? Am I being clear in what I'm asking?
I think so. I'm going to answer from an envelope standpoint. And is it more a concern over the condition of the masonry on the outside?
So it's just simply, simply the concern in, it's, so it's an important building for us, and we want to, we want to invest it, and we want to make sure that we're not investing good money after that.
Sure.
So if the bones are solid and there's, and we do some envelope repairs, do the sealing-up renovation, which would be a significant increase, a significant cost of the dis却an investment in the building, we want to be sure that that is, those are wisely spent dollars.
Sure. I think one thing that we touched briefly on in our last discussion was potentially having, or maybe you've already had it done, roof scan on that building to see if you have any soaking wet areas. Maybe you can look at those underneath and find that you have any problems with roof decks or anything like that. But I don't see any reason why they answer to your question. Is it, yeah, it's, you have good bones to the building, and there's no reason you shouldn't, you wouldn't go after something like that.
And I don't know exactly who would answer this question, but if we do embark upon a sealing-up renovation, what are the requirements, what will be held to as far as ADA compliance?
Yeah. So it's, this is not a good answer, but it kind of depends on what you do. If you're replacing one-for-one in kind, you don't have to do ADA complaints. But once you start to do different mechanical systems, you're poking new windows and new doors, and then it triggers that level two. And all of a sudden, you have to do all the ADA upgrades.
So, all right.
20% of us.
Hypothetical here, then. All right. So if we're looking at, it would not be an, like, from what, from our early conversations, it would not, we are not leaning towards an in-kind replacement of our HVAC. We're leaning more towards the system we have at Rocks. But everything else, we would stay essentially the same. Like, we would replace some doors, some lintels, that kind of stuff. But all of that would be in-kind, no moving.
If you're able to fit everything in the same spots, basically, and not have to cut new holes and new spaces for that equipment, then you should be okay not having to.
So even if, even if we're moving the in-room units?
Yeah. There's a moment where there's an interpretation by the code officials. But the bottom line is, if you are replacing a system, you're essentially fixing the system. And so that does not trigger it. And I think as long as it's not modifying significantly the building layout, you should be okay with just changing the system type. I think that's what you're asking.
That's exactly what I'm asking. Because there will be some investments that we'll have to make. As I've said at this seat more than a handful of times, our district is changing. We have fewer students, but we also have different needs. So in particular, at West, we'll have to make some investments in some classroom changes. But that'll be a small number of classrooms and a very focused investment supporting students with disabilities. So, but it'd be nice if we, if we can do the important stuff, the sealing-up stuff efficiently without having to blow it into a bigger project. Thank you. One other question. So there are, there are some energy rebates that are very attractive right now. So some of the numbers that have been floated up to us. So if we were to do a geothermal system, for example, at West, that might come in somewhere in the $6, $7 million range. But we could get a $2 or $3 million rebate a year after. You know what I'm talking about. Is that built in here in these big numbers?
None of that is built in here. These are raw costs. So if you're going to see the fortune, the good fortune of a rebate of some sort, which it is out there, I've seen it as well. We've not been able to apply it yet, but that's only because it's pretty fresh. Those numbers would come out of this cost. There's also total vauteac numbers out there as well. Sorry.
This cost also that's in there is, the cost that's in there also is not towards geothermal, which is what Ring Rocks has, which is a little more expensive. This was to replace it with a four-pipe system, like a traditional system. Because in that building, the chiller is brand new.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any others? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for your time going through the 83 slides. Appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Okay. That brings us to 5.1, report of the superintendent.
Thank you. Just a very short report this evening. As I mentioned last time, we do have tutoring programs that are funded through the ARP program going on throughout the district. And we also have a program at the high school that I did not mention. We have a Keystone Boot Camp that is going on for our biology students, so students that need additional support to be successful on the biology Keystone. That is now up and running. We have four of our biology teachers that are staffing that Monday through Thursday. So that's all happening.
Thank you. That brings us to action items, number six, personnel.
A motion that we combine 6.1 through 6.6.
A motion and a second to combine 6.1 through 6.6. Are there any questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. 6.7? Need a motion?
Yeah. I motion that we approve 6.7.
A motion and a second to approve 6.7. Are there any questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to 6.8.
A motion that we approve 6.8.
A motion and a second to approve 6.8 after school pruder. Are there any questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to 6.9, miscellaneous revised job description.
A motion that we approve 6.9.
A motion and a second to approve 6.9. Are there any questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Brings us to, motion passes. Brings us to 7.1, fund balance commitments.
A motion that we approve 7.1 through 7.3.
A motion and a second to approve 7.1 through 7.3. Are there any questions?
If it's okay, I'd just like to take a second to explain this to the public. So this, this action item concerns our fund balance. The fund balance is, easiest way to understand it, is our, it's our savings account. So fund balance dollars can be unassigned, assigned, or committed. And this, this action item moves to, moves to commit funds. Am I saying that correctly? Commit funds, they're still, they're still in our savings account. But it's, generally, it's good practice to have your saving, your fund balance dollars committed to future projects. So this, this one, this action would reassign some dollars to allocate them towards budget appropriations, and then also to an increase in dollars to capital projects. As our earlier presentation and our presentations over the past few board meetings have laid out for us, we do have some significant investments that we need to make in our physical buildings. So that's what this does. These actions are reversible, but this is, this is a good practice for a district, and that's what this action affects.
Are there any other questions? I think, too, it makes sense to, you know, give things a name. So I appreciate your work with regard to that, and assigning those slots. Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to 7.4, the June school board meeting date.
A motion that we approve 7.4.
Did you want to speak on any of that?
I'm sorry. So 7.2, this is another increase. This is Lincoln Center Counseling Services. Lincoln Center is a current partner. We have counselors from Lincoln Center operating in three of our buildings, correct? This is to provide support services for students, primarily IEP students, almost exclusively IEP students. This action that you just voted on approves an expansion of that. We do have increased need, so we're adding, adding an additional counselor. So thank you for that.
We're picking back up with 7.4. I believe we had a motion this afternoon. I may have gone a little bit off. Thank you so much. Are there any questions? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? A motion passes. Would you like to?
Okay. Yeah. Let me explain that one as well. So it has long been the practice of Pots Grove School District to schedule two board meetings in June. The purpose of board meetings in June, the second optional June meeting in particular, is if there are any difficulties approving a budget. A budget must be on public display for 30 days. This action moves the first, the first June meeting to 30 days after the meeting in May. We anticipate having a budget before you in May for your approval, and then 30 days after, by moving this meeting, we could then vote on the final budget. So that's the reason for moving this budget, moving that, that meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome. That brings us to number eight, action items, education.
A motion that we approve 8.1 through 8.3.
A motion and a second to approve 8.1 through 8.3. Are there any questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 9.1, the MCIE board update.
That would be me. Okay. So this is from the board meeting from last month. We have, our next board meeting is tomorrow night, which I unfortunately will not be able to attend in person, but I will be zooming in. So, so from last month, on the 22nd, as I've said before, every month, they highlight a different department. Last month's department was the Office of Community and Government Relations. We all know Tina Boletto. I think we've all met her. She was, she is the head of that department. And so she just gave us an overview of everything she does, dealing with Harrisburg and legislation and stuff like that. She, she does send out updates. I know Chuck forwards us the updates from her. She deals very, very closely with, you know, she, she watches what's going on in Harrisburg just very closely to see how it's going to affect all the school districts in Montgomery County and in the state for that matter. The next thing that was brought up was just that there's openings for members from other districts. And then Dr. Speaker shared a letter of congratulations from the Pennsylvania State Senator Tracy Penneychuk on the recent news that Montgomery County, an immediate unit, secured the Project Aware grant, which I did speak about last month. And then all the other stuff was sort of, you know, all the departments went over their stuff. The one thing that we do have coming up that everyone's sort of working towards is the, the foundation. the foundation is having their annual golf outing. So it's the MCIU Education Foundation, just like Pots Grove has their Education Foundation. They have their golf outing, it's on Monday, May fifteenth. They're always looking for sponsors, for golfers, for just about anything. And that, um, the, the Education Foundation gives basically money, it gives the opportunity to many kids to go to camp in the summer that wouldn't otherwise be able to do it. Sometimes they deal with like some, you know, post-graduation kind of things for some of the older kids. So they do a lot of good and if you guys, if any of you guys are out for the ball first and you want to go, let me know, I'll send you the information. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have ten point one, Policy Committee Meeting Minutes to approve. Need a motion and a second please?
Um, a motion to, that we approve ten point one.
Thanks, I have a motion and a second to approve ten point one, are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, next, ten point two, report of the operations and facilities committee.
Yes, the operations and facilities committee met on, excuse me, March fourteenth. There were four items of new business. The first item was a dead playhole presented the information which we just acted upon to move roughly ten million dollars in unassigned funds and split it up to roughly nine point six million to cap, for capital projects and half a million to budget appropriations. And Dr. Pennington, correct me if I'm overly glib in this, but this is little more than me taking my wallet from my left pocket and putting it in my right pocket. It has about the same level of significance because, as was explained, the money is not necessarily committed to be expended for capital projects, although we just saw a large num, a large amount of money that's aimed for improvements to various buildings. That was the first item and we already acted on more. Second item was a budget presentation. Ms. Bet Young gave a presentation on facilities for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. For the past four years, first, let me just summarize what she said. For the past several years, that, those expenditures have been relatively flat. This year, owing to the inflation, which we've been talking about on the Schrader Report and other matters, costs will rise by seven point seven percent for roughly a hundred thousand dollars. The third item that was discussed was a budget presentation by Jeff Butler on technology. He discussed the aspects of the technology budget and several factors he's been doing to contain the costs. Most obvious one, which we're all familiar with, is the launching the Chromebook Initiative to replace Apples with Chromebooks. The other factors he's been talking about were the district is moving its cell phone service from Verizon to T-Mobile, which will save the district money and give the administration access to a carry portal, portal in emergency situations. The last item, which is sort of related to the Schrader presentation, is the Giza Project Update. We've had, and this is confusing to some of us, we've had the Schrader Group discuss a long-term program for enhancements to the physical plant of this, of the school district. We've also had Giza, which is more focused on the energy usage. And correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly, because this is hard, this is kind of hard to follow. Giza has its own parameter called an EUI. Those of you who love acronyms, get your daddy to record this one. EUI stands for Energy Usage Intensity. And for all their projects, Giza does this for various school districts in the area. The, their project is less than thirty-five. Our EUI is scoring a sixty-two. I don't understand how this number works, but it's like golf. Low number is better. So apparently there's for us considerable room for improvement. And they found West Pots Grove again comes in as being one of our buildings most in need of work and the middle school need the most renovations. They proposed looking at LED lighting for Ring Rocks in the music room at the middle school. Music room windows at the middle school for this summer. And in twenty twenty-four, they were looking at HVAC and envelope access for West Pots Grove and the middle school. They were also talking about geothermal, which my experience at another institution, geothermal has great potential for savings and has a bright future for it. And certainly in the middle school or at West Pots Grove, there is place to do that where going. So the next steps for them would be at the end of March, finalizing the scope for the lighting and the windows and the, and presenting that, those for consideration at our next meeting in April. If everything is acceptable by the committee, then perhaps presenting this at the April twenty-fifth meeting of the board meeting for final approval. So, uh, uh, those, so that's basically the report on the four topics that we discussed. And that's my report. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nipper. Next is ten point three, the CIT Committee Meeting Report. Mr. Boyce was kind enough to offer to present the notes.
Good evening. Good to see everybody. The CIT Committee met on March twenty-first at six thirty. We had six items on our agenda, we got to only two, but that was not at account of really good conversation. The two items that we did get to, the first being high school course enrollment process that's occurring or has occurred for our students. So Dr. Smith shared what that raw data looked like in terms of what students' first and second alternative choices were for the courses that they would be taking. Of course, one of our main goals in this process is to make as, make sure as many students as possible get their first choice across the board. We did have a group of approximately twenty students and parents who attended that and they were making, they had some questions about how decisions might be made and how that might impact AP classes and/or honors classes. What we found through that conversation is there were some misconceptions out in our community, so that's where that really great conversation occurred. So some of those conversation points included, there, there was a misconception that there's a magic number that exists and if that number is not hit, a class will not run. That does not exist and it doesn't exist for a variety of reasons. This being a very comprehensive process with a lot of individuals involved, there's all sorts of scenarios that could happen as a result of that. So for example, sometimes we have two courses that have small enrollment numbers, we can put those courses together and still run both, but run them as one particular class. Other times we might say, we're not going to run it now, we might run it later. Those courses never disappear off the program of studies unless of course the board acts on that. So that means that choice always remains for students at a future enrollment period as well. The other conversation point that came up was just sort of the philosophy of AP classes and/or honors classes. So to be very clear on this, there is not a push for every student to be involved in an AP course. However, we are very clear that if students have some clear ambitions for post-secondary education plans, meaning they're going on to a two-year or four-year college, we want those students taking AP in their first college course with us here in Pots Grove. In a small class size with the care and direction of a dedicated Pots Grove High School teacher, while his or her family is very close by, provide a lot of support and increase the likelihood of that student's success in that particular area. So that's something that we were focusing on as well. Again, this is a comprehensive process, the high school will continue to work on that in the coming weeks. It was shared by Dr. Smith, our high school principal, that if any family or student is concerned about any part of the process or what the schedule or student's schedule might look like, you're always welcome, the community is welcome to reach out to guidance counselors who are actively engaged in this process, or Dr. Smith, or Mr. Stein, who is our high school assistant principal. The second agenda item that we talked about, sort of related, but not quite, is Pots Grove Middle School. Dr. Gonzalez, who is our middle school principal, did share a draft of the program of studies for the middle school level, similar to what you would see at our high school with their program of studies. For this evening's or that evening's conversation, it was really focused about the various pathways a student might take, in particular focusing on math and science courses. So over time, we've been looking at our data, that's just a common practice that we have and we always use that data to make revisions on the spot. We also use it to make recommendations for programming that we might need to change over time based upon how students perform. So a couple changes that we are making, and this is actually the second time that CIT Committee has talked about it, really focusing on sixth grade as a foundational year for mathematics, meaning that all students kind of have a standardized sixth grade year in terms of mathematics, making sure that they're, they have those foundations and concepts strongly in place before they move on to some more high intensity kinds of math classes. That doesn't mean that students who are, are moving at a higher rate, we of course differentiate within the classroom to make sure that their needs are met as well. The other thing that we're looking at doing is eliminating biology in eighth grade. The reason for that is looking at our data, our students at that particular level don't perform particularly as well as we might expect them to on the Keystone Exam. In, this is Daniel's opinion, but I think it's shared by others, the biology Keystone Exam is perhaps the hardest, arguably the hardest Keystone Exam. And when we're putting that kind of pressure on an eighth grade student, let's, let's pull back from that and make sure that we put those foundational pieces strongly in place. So that was another area that we were looking at and making that change. And then finally, Dr. Lucas did share that her department has worked for a very long time on completing the special education plan and a draft of that is up on the website, I believe, for thirty-day review for any input that public might have on that. Mrs. McIntyre, did I miss anything that you wanted to address?
Not a thing, thank you. I appreciate it, are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to ten point four, the Athletics Co-curricular and Community Relations Report.
Ms. Grimm isn't here, so I'm happy to share details of that committee. So we did have actually twelve items on the agenda. I won't go through every one of them, you can see the full minutes of the meeting on our website. First item was Mr. Onsbach reported on spring athletes. We have three hundred and eighty spring athletes, that is a twenty-plus percent jump this year. That includes middle school and high school, so it's great to see Falcons out on, out on the fields. Speaking of athletes, in celebration of our Read Across America Week, over seventy of our athletes actually went out to our three elementary schools and read to our students, it was a delight. We also had at least one board member read slash rap with some of our youngsters and that was equally delightful. Mr. Onsbach also provided information on the Class of Twenty Twenty-Three Athletic Hall of Fame. We have five inductees, Mr. Michael Bauer, graduate oh-three, track and field, Ms. Bernadette Diaz, graduate nineteen eighty in tennis, Mr. Robert Gingrich, seventy-one in basketball, Mr. Brian Chalcross, ninety-three, football, soccer, wrestling, and baseball, and Mr. Richard Pennypacker, who retired here in twenty eighteen, high school football coach. They will be celebrated Saturday, April twenty-second at noon in the high school. It's a wonderful ceremony, so if you can stop by and help celebrate them, that's great. On the co-curricular side of the house, Mr. Onsbach reported the, the attendance numbers for Anything Goes. It was an excellent show, as we've noted here several times. We had just over fifteen hundred people attend in the three days, so that was really great. On the community relations side of the house, Mr. Onsbach reported that Ms. Shock Physical Therapy is again renewing their contract with us to sponsor some, let's see, they're sponsoring our, I believe our baseball fields, tennis courts, I'm sorry, our tennis courts. There's even potential for some internships that we're exploring there. The, Ms. Sabalski reported on our Giant Food Partnership. So two great things about Giant Food, they have had a couple of programs that we've participated with them. One, they had the Roundup for Education Program and they presented us with a check for three thousand two hundred and twelve dollars that is designed to support food insecure families. So our social worker team are working to use that money to do that. And they also ran a food drive and myself and a couple other administrators were fortunate enough to participate in that and got to meet a lot of our, our neighbors. And we've got, I don't know, I don't recall how many boxes, but dozens and dozens of boxes of non-perishables. So we really thank Giant and our community members who made those programs a success. Lastly, Ms. Sabalski presented a change to the annual report. So normally what we have done is we have printed a multi-page annual report and mailed that to seven thousand houses in the, in Pottstown. That's a pretty significant cost, so what we're, and we don't always hit the right houses. So what, we're looking at doing something differently, where we're going to mail a postcard that has a QR code that, that people can then look at the annual report. And we want to do this to provide more frequent annual, more frequent reports and get more information out to our community members who don't necessarily have a student in our school district. And that's the report.
Thank you very much, are there any questions? We're at new business already. Dr. Pennington, if you want to begin?
I have nothing.
Mr. Leach, do you have anything for new business? Okay, um, I also have no new-
I do not.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. I also have no new business because Lily and Emily are not here and I miss them. So I have to do a new business, just sadness. So we'll start this side, Jay? Dr. Nipper? Jay? Yeah?
Yeah, I just want to thank the German language teachers and all the parents and students. The exchange student program has gone extremely smoothly. There's going to be a lot of very sad kids Saturday morning.
Ashley, do you have any new business?
I just wanted to say something really quickly. I'm sure you all know there was another school shooting yesterday and it just... I have no words when things like this happen continuously over and over and over again and nothing is done about it. No parent should ever have to ID their child in a morgue after they've sent them off to school. Um, no parent should ever have to ID their child in a morgue after they've sent them off to school for the day. Um, that should never happen. No child should ever not come home from school and no child should ever be afraid to go to school. Parents should not be afraid. Um, last I heard, I, I meant to look it up today and I got caught up doing other things, but the, the last statistics I heard was that three hundred thousand children in this country have now been exposed to some kind of mass shooting situation. Um, and everyone's saying it's a mental health problem. What the mental health of those three hundred thousand children that are being exposed to, that, that have to live with this every day, um, knowing that they either lived through it or they, their, their friends didn't or whatever. And some are being exposed now multiple times because they're going off to college and they're, they're being exposed to it there. Um, I, I just hope that something happens soon. I know I'm one person. I, I can't do a whole lot, but, um, this, this just has to stop. It has to. No child should ever not step off that bus at the end of the day.
Thank you. We are at public comment, ten point one. So this is public comment for anything, uh, that you wish to speak on. I know we do have one, one of us handed in.
Brian Robinson.
Good evening. Uh, Brianna Robinson, teacher at Rocks and lower Pots Grove resident. Um, Ashley Custer, you segwayed nicely into a portion of my speech, so thank you for that. Um, I am here tonight as a follow-up from when I spoke last. I know the second round of public speaking doesn't require a response, so the only thing I could hope for is that one of you would show up in our schools to observe what occurs daily. As of tonight, nobody has yet visited and I'm left to wonder if what I'm saying is really being heard. At the last meeting, there was some time spent discussing the microphones used in the high school musical. What I took from the exchanges that took place was that from one evening of all of you watching that show, many of you noticed that the sound system could and should be addressed and you immediately started working to make that happen. I'm left to wonder if the same would hold true if you spent a day in our schools. Would you see enough aggressive behaviors, adults being kicked, slapped, punched, threatened, bit, and cursed at, their shirts torn from their arms in front of the students in their class? Or children being pushed and hit, cursed at, uh, bullied? Would those actions being seen firsthand have enough of an impact to warrant further discussion? I've been thinking a lot about the school shootings in the news and the effects that they have on all those involved. We know the obvious trauma that comes with this and in the past we've discussed the trauma some of our own children experience when they are doing the active shooter drills in our schools. We know this is very true and real, but we fail to see the trauma that is caused daily when students are witnessing these aggressive behaviors towards the staff, their fellow classmates, and even themselves. As educators, we talk with the parents of these students, we talk to the students as well, about their child's fears, the students' fears, and all the concerns. We know that there is something to be said for what the parents and students are saying. However, there is only so much that we can do. I've come here twice before to share my concerns regarding behaviors in education. I've invited you all to visit our schools. I am once again inviting all of you to visit and seek for yourself. Please come in and see what takes place in our schools, the schools you were elected to support and maintain. I am certain that you will then decide that the behavior should be immediately addressed and you will begin working to find solutions quickly. I look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Are there additional questions? Or public comment? That brings us to the ten point one, the education. All in favor? All in favor?